Arielle Shaw, President and Founder of Southern Crescent Women in Business. We have a chapter out there for Fayette County Women in Business. And I'm just excited that Leonard has decided to join us. I know Leonard from a previous, some work that we've done before. So we're excited to be in Fayette County. So Leonard, tell us, give us some updates as to what's going on with Fayette County School District, please.
Sure, I am happy, happy to be here. Thank you so much for spending some time with me this afternoon. I'll just give some updates where we are in terms of COVID, in terms of some other things, and then hopefully answer any questions that anyone has, or at least be able to point you in the right direction to find the answers that you need. Before I start, I do, I feel obligated to apologize for my COVID hairdo, but that is just the way things go sometimes. So, you know, it's, if anyone's ever grown their hair, there's an awkward stage, so that's why it's covered. And so, updates, before, before we get to sort of COVID and how we're opening virtual brick and mortar, let me give you a couple of updates on some other really important school district things. At our school board meeting yesterday, we did name Dr. Jonathan Patterson, who is an Associate Superintendent in Glenette County Schools right now, as the sole finalist to be the next superintendent here in Fayette. Jonathan has a great background as a high school principal, as a, as a principal leader, as a district leader in curriculum instruction. We are very, very excited for Jonathan to be here and anticipate coming to an agreement with him and hiring him at our board meeting in two weeks. So, please, please check out Jonathan and, you know, you know, excited to welcome him here. On the budget, you know, many of you know, the Georgia General Assembly had a big recess in the spring due to COVID, came back very, very late and passed a state budget. Fayette County is seeing about eleven and a half million dollar reduction in our state funding for schools this year. So trying to deal sort of with the budgetary impacts of that, that huge reduction. I also want to say that in terms of our property tax revenue, the number of people who are exempting out of school tax has almost doubled over the last six or seven years. And in this time of budget cuts and in this time of, you know, emergency COVID legislative sessions, our Republican Legislative Delegation has put a, another property tax exemption on our ballot in November that only applies to our school system. This would limit future collections of property tax based on current home values and is of tremendous long-term concern for anyone who thinks the health of our schools is important to the health of our community. So be looking for more information on that, but just know in the back of your head when you get to a question that sounds so wonderful about cutting your taxes, that it is going to have a big impact. And I at least would urge you to, to vote no when we get to that. So, what everybody wants to know about, how are we opening schools? What are we doing? So, first of all, we did give all parents a choice between choosing an all-virtual or a possible in-person school experience. We gave parents multiple opportunities to rethink their choice or change their mind. And, and at the end of, of the day, at the deadline, about thirty percent of our students across the district chose online only. But that does vary by school. So some schools had more, some schools had less. And so, in terms of the virtual school offerings, I know that all along, there were changes and concerns and confusion about what classes would be available to a virtual student and who would be teaching those classes. And that has changed over time. I think the staff in our district approached it as only giving people the choice for what they knew they could accomplish. And as they got into the work and through the pressure of the school board and our citizens and parents and needs, we have managed to significantly up the number and the quality of the virtual-only offerings across the district. So if you are choosing a virtual-only for elementary, you will be taught by Fayette County teachers using the Fayette County system. It is, you know, when they're going through right now trying to, to match children up with teachers, they are working their hardest and doing their best to try to give people teachers who would have been in their home school. But it is not guaranteed that you would get a teacher from your home school, but it is a Fayette County teacher who is teaching at one of the Fayette County Elementary Schools. That just depends on how many kids and where they are. Every, you know, they are making sure that the offerings to children who choose virtual are going to be the same as the offerings for anyone who chooses brick and mortar. So Connections classes will be available, art, music, all of those things are going to be available to elementary students. Gifted classes, it's, they're, you know, for, for the most part, I think it's, it's safe to say in general, the offerings for the elementary virtual student should be the same as a, as a brick and mortar student.
Okay.
Middle school, very much the same story. Middle school will be Fayette County teachers using the Fayette County system. Connections classes will be offered. Again, a preference to place you with a teacher from what would have been your home school, but particularly for Connections class or something like that, it's less likely that that would be the case. In high school, the offerings really, really vary depending on what classes your children are enrolled in. So some of the classes will be through the Edge Annuity Curriculum System and supervised by Fayette County teachers. Some of the classes will be taught by Fayette County teachers using Fayette County system. And there are a handful of classes that will be offered through the Georgia Virtual School. Some AP classes that we just couldn't manage to offer virtually on our own. So it very, very much depends on, again, what classes your child is enrolled in, but it, the, the number of classes that are available virtually has grown tremendously. I know even band and chorus, they are now planning to offer virtually. So I know at the beginning, there was lots of questions about, well, you know, only half the classes my kid wants to take are available. Most of those issues should be resolved at this point. And really, for any individual questions, I would go to your child's counselor and your child's principal because it, it just varies depending on what that class is and how many people have requested it and how, how it's staffed.
Okay.
So, that's.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Now, I was gonna just sort of touch on how brick and mortar works.
Okay.
For a minute, before we get into questions, or we could do virtual questions now. Either way, it's, it's good with me.
Let's go ahead to brick and mortar.
Okay, so, brick and mortar is parents who want their child to come to school. And we are operating our brick and mortar system on three different safety levels. So at any given time, we could be in a red, a yellow, or a green safety level. A green safety level is school as we know it. Your child goes to school every day of the week. Everything is just sort of, from a scheduling standpoint, what you would have expected before. We, of course, are instituting all sorts of safety measures in our schools in terms of, you know, changing operations, where kids walk, when kids walk, where they go, how they eat, all those kinds of things are still in effect. But from a, from a scheduling standpoint, green is normal school every day of the week. Correspondingly, red would be, it's not safe for anyone to come to school. And all school is then virtual if we're on a red safety level. Where we are starting on Monday is the yellow safety level, just to add the middle level of confusion. Yellow is designed to get kids into the building, allow them to meet their teachers, build those relationships, but do so in a, in a safer manner than everybody there all the time. So on the yellow safety level, kids in grades K through 2 or self-contained special education classroom students will attend school five days a week, every day. Children in grades 3 through 12 will be split into either an A section or a B section. And they will either attend school in person on Monday and Tuesday and do virtual the other days of the week, or they will attend school in person on Thursday and Friday and do virtual the other days. Wednesday is the flex cleaning day in between the groups. It's a day for office hours and other help for teachers. And then the days that you are doing virtual, that someone else is in school, you're mostly doing assignments on your own those days. So that safety level, like I said, could change. It could change for an individual classroom. It could change for an individual school. It could change system-wide. We look at a whole variety of data points from community spread numbers to our individual case rates in schools to determine what safety level is. So that is the very quick, short summary of, you know, multiple, multiple options for how children will go to school this fall.
Okay, well, we definitely appreciate that update. Ladies, I want you guys to put your questions in the chat box. I know one of the questions that a few of our ladies had was specific to the offerings for, I guess, our high school. So if the child is in those AP courses, you're saying that they will still be able to access those courses? And they will have a supervised? Tell me what that supervised looks like, because what I'm, what I'm understanding is they do not have an instructor.
So, yeah, so it does. It depends on what class it is. And, and I cannot, you know, tell you how each class is, is going to be administered. So again, I really urge you for a specific class question to, to talk to your counselor. So some classes will be through what's called the Edge Annuity system. And so those classes are mostly taught through online lessons in the system. But there is a Fayette County teacher who is assigned to help supervise the students and work with them through the material, but not necessarily giving the direct instruction. The direct instruction is coming through the Edge Annuity platform. That's some of the classes. Some other classes, and in particular, most AP classes, most non-academic career classes are being taught by a Fayette County instructor, doing it, you know, independently, virtually with the Fayette County system, providing all the instruction. And then there are a few classes where we are offering it through the Georgia Virtual School, which means there is an assigned teacher teaching that class through the Georgia Virtual School platform, you know, as an individual instructor. So there's always a Fayette County teacher involved in that particular class just for some of the classes through Edge Annuity. They're doing less of the teaching part of it, and that comes more through the online system.
Okay. One of the questions from Glenetta, she asks, if she chooses virtual for the first semester, can they switch to brick and mortar for the second?
So we are, we are planning on taking a survey and seeing where people are there in terms of switching. It is a hard thing to, to promise that for any individual student in any individual building, that there would necessarily be the capacity for that student to be there. So I know that our intention is to accommodate everyone as best we can, but as we, you know, split up our teachers into some teaching virtual, some teaching in brick and mortar, and depending on where the students in which schools have chosen each, as you can imagine, it can get a little complicated in terms of then making sure we have space in any individual school or grade or class second semester to accommodate switching. So we're going to try our best, but, you know, if we could have predicted the future a few months ago, I, you know, it is, I would say this, is everyone involved in this whole process, you know, is, is burning the candle at both ends, is not sleeping because they're worried about kids and, and their experience. And, you know, if there was ever a time for all of us to sort of band together and, and be supportive of each other, now's, now's the time to do that. So I know everyone is struggling, everyone is frustrated, and, you know, we have to be there for each other, so.
Right, absolutely. Are you requiring masks for in-person? Is that, and that's, that goes for K through 2, since you're splitting it up? And then 3rd through 12?
Masks, I believe, are required for 3rd through 12. So teachers, in their own discretion, if they are able to take a class outside or be able to have a socially distanced class, can allow a mask break during the day. Of course, you know, you gotta take your mask off to, to eat, and we're going to be arranging that and trying to do that in the safest manner. But in general, on a yellow safety level, masks are required.
Okay. All right, ladies, we want to hear from you. So I know there were a lot of questions, so just make sure you're dropping them in the chat box. I want to make sure that we are trying to get as many questions in with Leonard since we have this time, and we want to make sure that everybody feels comfortable. What, what's the protocol if you do have to possibly pull your child from the school district for this year? Maybe if the virtual doesn't work as best as you would like it? And getting them back in, is there any, anything else that, you know, someone, a parent, needs to take into consideration?
In terms of withdrawing your student and, and possibly choosing another kind of program, for the most part, it really depends on, on the situation of your individual child. When you get into high school, you know, you get into credits and graduation requirements. And so choices that you make around that can impact those kinds of things, or athletic eligibility, that sort of thing generally. You know, for a younger student, you know, there would be, you know, probably little, little impact on that long-term. Again, it depends on, you know, if you are receiving gifted services and then, you know, give those up. Do you have to, you know, depending on how long you're gone, do you have to retest? You know, there can be some sort of bureaucratic hurdles like that kind of thing. So those are the kinds of things that I would think of in terms of deciding, making that decision.
Okay, that makes sense. So is there anything else that you feel like these, the parents need to know, need to consider? From, you know, just looking at all the aspects that you guys have to take into consideration? How many, how many kids are in your school system?
So Fayette County school system has roughly twenty, almost 21,000 students.
Okay, so that, that, that's like half of what we have. And Henry, what are, what are your class sizes?
So class sizes vary by grade. We have, you know, our, what we like our class sizes to be, and then we have our maximums for, you know, kindergarten, you know, kindergarten's like 18, and then it goes up to about 28 for middle school and high school. Of course, you know, lots of classes like band and things like that are way, way, way bigger. But one of the things that we have tried to do in Fayette County very intentionally is just try to keep our class sizes small. That is, that makes it especially hard when we have very lean budgetary years like this is, because for the most part, how much money your school system spends is really dependent on just about only two factors. One is what your class size is, and the other is, is how much you pay teachers. There's a whole lot of the margins in terms of supplies and fuel and, and things like that. But those are really the two biggest factors in a school system budget. So here in Fayette, we try to keep our class sizes small because we feel like that helps our teachers, that helps our kids, and that's what our parents want.
That's really good. So we have a question. Does the teacher reach out to the student via email? Or will they give the student in need of assistance via Skype or phone call? I'm not sure if that is, I'm assuming that is in regard to the Virtual Academy.
So, you know, I would hesitate to say what, what all, all teachers are going to do. I will say that we are using a completely new learning management system this year. So all of the interactions that your children have with their teachers in terms of digital resources and submitting assignments and how the class is set up, we no longer use Blackboard. If people have some experience with that, the new system is called Schoology and is reportedly way, way easier. So hopefully, every parent has an Infinite Campus account. And if you don't, don't have an account for that, please make one of those. And then that links to your Schoology account, where your child will interact with their teachers and have assignments posted and, you know, Google Classroom kind of thing. So we're trying to sort of standardize everything through one platform because we know how frustrating it is as a parent to try to remember which class you have to log in, where, with, what kind of password.
I think that was a lot of the concern we were hearing as well, is every teacher was doing things differently. So, so I guess with this, you're saying it's a little bit more consistent?
Right, so hopefully, you know, you'll, you'll, you know, have the same, same way to log in and interact with all of your children's teachers and classes and see information the same way across the board. And I'll have to learn a whole new system for, for each thing.
Okay. Another question, you mentioned budgets early in the conversation. I see that some schools are offering branded masks to their students, and some are asked to bring their own. Who determines whether or not a department budget can cover PPE for the students? Is it the school admin? Or is there guidance from the board on spending a budget allotted for a department, i.e. band, chorus, orchestra, to purchase, require PPE for the students?
So as a, as a system, we are, we have purchased PPE for, for our employees, depending on, you know, what, what their job function is and where they are, that PPE could, could be different for, for instance, for, you know, teachers in special education systems or our interpreters might have face shields issued to them instead of masks. Any student who needs a mask provided to them will be given one. But of course, everyone is welcome to choose to, to wear their own mask as long as, you know, if you could wear a T-shirt with something written on it, you can wear a mask with that same thing written on it. But other than that, you know, people have their own discretion in, in terms of what to wear. I know there's already been some schools and PTOs and bands and things running fundraisers with school branded stuff, so.
Okay. Will the child's transcript say that the student is a member or graduate of the Fayette County High School or Fayette Virtual Academy? Sorry, that's one of the other questions.
There, I am almost certain that children graduate from their home high school. So if they're a Fayette County student doing the virtual school, their diploma is going to say Fayette County High School. They just, their transcript will show that they received credits through the Fayette Virtual School, but it's a Fayette County High School student transcript diploma.
Okay. Will virtual kids be completely on self-pace? Or will they have a roll call time to begin working in the mornings?
It will depend, depend on the class and the age of the student. All of our teachers are going through some extensive, particularly teachers who are teaching virtual. I believe they have spent all day today in some continuing education on best practices on how to run digital classrooms and remote learning. So I would suspect for most, for, for most classes, particularly any class that's taught by a Fayette County teacher directly, that there will be specific times that a child is expected to be online and participating.
So just for clarity, pulling your K through 2. So K through 2, are they not standardized to report from like 8 to 12? Or 8 to 2, is, is there any type of standard uniform? Because I know with the parents, if they're able to put a schedule together, because remember, these are also working women.
I, I, you know, to be honest, I, I cannot answer that question in terms of specifics and whether or not it varies between the different schools. So I, you know, that's, that's one I forgot to ask ahead of time and made sure I was prepared to.
So we're gonna, we're gonna charge you to take that back.
My youngest graduated in May, so, you know, I am not suffering through the day-to-day of it like, like, like most of you do, so.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, that schedule's important. I know for our school district, I know we, they're also offering an evening option as well. Not even sure if y'all want to consider something like that. The evening option is from four to seven. It, it just, it's, it's an option. I don't, you know.
I did do that, and, you know, you know, it is, it's a fascinating approach that I'm not sure that any, anyone here had really thought of yet. But I did see the news of that, and I'm very, very interested to see how, how that works and, and what the response to that, to that is.
Right, right. Well, ladies, do you, do we have any additional questions? I hope we have been able to answer, and we got to most of the questions. I, I think I've seen all of them, so hopefully, hopefully, we haven't missed anybody.
I'm, I'm gonna put my phone number and email in the chat so that if anyone, you know, as soon as we hang up, you know, remembers what they were supposed to ask, you know, just please, you know, give me a buzz. And like I said, if I don't know, I, I can help you find out who, who, who does know.
Absolutely. All right, ladies, if there are no additional questions, we want to make sure we're getting them all. Okay, we got one more. If we are in the situation beyond 2020, has Fayette County considered implementing a system similar to surrounding counties, which allows all children to view their class via Skype? Are they using Skype or are they using Google Classroom?
I believe that most of the online live sessions are, are done through Zoom. I think is the platform that we use for, for that. In terms of, you know, what is gonna come next year, the year after, I do know that it is almost certain that there are gonna be a large percentage of our students who want to choose to learn online for, you know, a whole lot of reasons that, you know, aren't necessarily COVID or health and safety. You know, for just personal preference, you know, people are gonna want to do that, and we are gonna continue as we have all summer in terms of making those online offerings better and better, and making sure that all of the classes that are available to any of our students are available to kids online. So, you know, I would expect as, as you look to the future that, you know, we will rely on platforms like Edge Annuity and other providers less and less, and do more and more on our own because we want the very best for our students, and that's what our parents expect too. So, you know, the, this, this virtual option, I think, is here to stay regardless of, of safety levels in the future. And, and I expect, you know, that'll be one of the big changes for our system and for all, you know, school systems moving forward.
Interesting, I didn't know that. So just out of curiosity, do you think that will be for all grade levels, or is that like just third grade and up?
I mean, I think that, you know, for the most part, people, you know, can relate better to online schooling the older the student is. I personally used to be a preschool teacher, so, you know, I cannot imagine, you know, teaching my three-to-five-year-olds online or even in person where, you know, you can't touch each other. I mean, so, you know, for most students, I believe there's always gonna be a benefit to being around other students and, and around a teacher in person. I think, you know, hopefully, we can do that safely. And I think that will, for, again, for most kids, that's gonna be the best choice for them. But like I said, for a variety of reasons, and, you know, I think there will be kids who do better online, and families that do better with that schedule. And I think that's always gonna be an option moving forward for our kids.
Okay, well, Leonard, I definitely appreciate you. I do want to ask a couple more questions in relation to the extracurricular activities. You mentioned that band and art would be available virtually. So is the expectation that it will happen virtually or it's offered to those who are attending virtual? Meaning, they may be virtual students, and they've decided to do virtual all semester, and then they have an opportunity to then come in for like a band lesson? Or does that mean they all, they have access to band via home?
Right, right, so, you know, again, depends on, on the level and things like that. So virtual elementary students will be scheduled to have virtual music class at some point, you know, during the week. So that'll be a Fayette County teacher coming online via Zoom and teaching, you know, music class. You know, in high school, if you are a band student and signed up to take band class as a virtual student, you will be in a virtual band class. There will be a Fayette County band director who meets with your class at the scheduled time. You will get music, you will practice, you will all get on Zoom and play together. And, and, you know, as best we can, try to recreate as good of a band opportunity as is possible in a virtual world.
So that means they are coming to pick up their band items from the school at some point?
Yeah, so they'll have to have their, you know, so band, band teachers will be in touch with kids in terms of instrument rental and, and all that kind of stuff.
Okay, and what about art? So you're doing virtually on art, are you guys also providing supplies that need to then be picked up?
I don't know specifically that question, how, how art supplies work, or that I don't know. I would anticipate, at least at the beginning of the semester, that, that the lessons would focus on things that people already had available. Again, I, I can't say for sure.
Okay. Well, I think this has been great, Glenetta. I'm so glad you found this helpful. Hopefully, most of you ladies that I know I've spoken to over the past few days have, have gotten some ease to starting this new year. I know as a parent, as a businesswoman, you know, trying to make sure your, your kid is taken care of. And I've heard that a lot of folks have moved out there specifically for the Fayette County school. So hopefully, this has been good, it's brought some clarity. Leonard has extended his email address, which is public. But he's also giving you guys his personal cell phone, so I want y'all to know that's, that's a big deal. You know, so you have a, one of your elected officials who is willing to, you know, say, hey, come out and touch me, you know, as much as you need, I'm, I'm accessible. So that's extremely important, especially in, in this situation that we're dealing with. One more question. For your PPE gear, are you guys doing any type of the Plexiglas and all that sort of stuff for your in-person at a district level?
You know, we have been installing Plexiglas in different places. It is, you know, we don't have any, you know, I know people have seen pictures of different classrooms and stuff where there's barriers between where students sit, that sort of thing. I don't think we're doing anything like that. But, you know, you'll see it in, you know, front office spaces or, you know, where the nurses or, you know, places like that, in the cafeterias to separate employees and employees from students in terms of that. So, you know, we are, you know, there's a whole long list of new sanitizing procedures. We have ordered new filtration systems for some of our schools that didn't have the most updated UV air filtration systems. We have ordered those to retrofit those schools with the most modern equipment. We authorized yesterday the purchase of cameras that also take temperatures so that we can screen a large number of children as they enter the building and flag any, any potential problems to, to get a follow-up with an actual temperature check with the nurse to try to, you know, limit exposures. We rely entirely in this process on parents and parents keeping potentially sick kids at home, on parents letting us know if they have a positive test in their family or a positive exposure. Like I said, this is a community thing, we're all in it together. And unless we've got each other's back and share information, it's hard to keep everyone safe.
And so is the protocol to, if there is some type of exposure, to what? What is, what is your protocol?
I don't know exactly what the protocol is, so I'm gonna say right now that if, as a parent, you believe there's a positive exposure, you know, I think you just call, call your school and talk to the principal or the school nurse. The school nurses in every building have gone through the Department of Health training in terms of, you know, how to interact with patients, but also how to do some initial contact tracing. So really, I would think for any health-related concern, I would contact your school nurse directly. And if you don't know who that is, you can always go through the principal.
Okay. All right, so this will wrap up our conversation with school board member Leonard Pressburg. Again, Leonard, we appreciate you coming on. I think we decided this Friday, I believe. So we had a pretty quick turnaround to, to putting this out, and I don't think we put this out until yesterday. Not, we didn't have a lot of time, so we definitely wanted to make sure that we were moving into the school year comfortably. We were allowing our ladies to have direct conversations with their elected officials as it relates to the school. So again, thank you all for coming on. Please make sure, if you have any questions, just let us know. Leonard has put his email address there. It's the Fayette County School Board, which again is on the website for, you know, on the Fayette County School Board's website. But he's also provided his cell phone number, which again is very, you know, honorable because that's a lot of access. You guys have a lot of constituents. So just make sure, you know, that we're, we're respectful of, you know, that time. Although Leonard, Leonard, you said yours is out of high school, right?
Yeah, so, you know, if, you know, the world sort of stays how it is now, we'll be taking the youngest to college in a few weeks, and my, my oldest is starting her first year as a science teacher at Sandy Creek High School. So it's exciting to see her come back and teach where she graduated from, so.
Wow. All right, everyone, so thank you all for joining us. This is Southern Crescent Women in Business, specifically the Fayette County Women in Business chapter. And it has been my pleasure. I am Ariel Shaw, the founder and president, again with Leonard Pressburg for your school board. So have a blessed day. And again, if you guys have any additional questions, just please feel free to shoot them out. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ariel, this was a lot of fun.
Thanks.
Bye.